Loaners, they can give us that. Ball's broken.
Recording in progress.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'd like to call to order the North St. Paul Arts and Culture Commission Meeting for October fourth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Woo!
It is six thirty-four P. M. My name is Tom, I'll be your host for this evening's session. All right, if we could take the roll, Sarah, please.
Yes, Tom's on it.
Here.
Carrie Nettow.
Here.
Amanda Black.
Here.
Stacy Martin.
Yep.
Emily Hay, Nguyen, Lisa Ritchie, and C. Yang are all out today. Julia Garacki.
Here.
Lisa Wong.
Here.
Thank you, Sarah. Uh, we now will look at adopting the agenda, does anyone have anything you would like to add or change?
No, looks good.
Entertained a motion to adopt the agenda as is?
So moved.
Moved by Carrie?
Seconded.
Seconded by Amanda, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Close Carrie's. Approval of minutes, anyone get a chance to, did everyone get a chance to take a look at the minutes from our September sixth meeting?
They reviewed both, nice job.
Very well done. Entertained a motion to approve the minutes from last month's meeting as is?
So moved.
Moved by Stacy.
Seconded.
Seconded by Amanda, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion Carrie's. Uh, meeting open to the puppets, we don't have anybody here. And. Public hearings, we don't have any public hearings, I don't know if we ever would. Uh, Commission Business Action Items and Recommendations, so, some fun stuff, we're gonna recap the parade and the Autumn Arts Festival, and then we'll have updates from our subcommittees, and then a little discussion about culture in ACC projects. So let's start with the parade recap, you wanna start us off, Sarah?
Sure, yeah, I'm, what we're kinda looking for, both with the parade recap and the art, uh, festival recap, is just what went well, what didn't in both of those scenarios, um, and then moving forward in the next two meetings, we'll discuss suggestions for next year, so this is focused on what we did this year, um, so, since I wasn't able to go to the parade, I'd like to hear what all of you thought.
I emailed you my feedback and suggestions for next year, I thought it was great, I had a lot of fun, the walk was not too bad.
I think the pace was too fast.
There was definitely some timing issues, when I was coming back, there was a huge gap, so there was some.
So, C. and I were on the truck, so we got to watch, like, I had this bird's eye view balancing our huge sign, right, watching all of the rest of everyone sprinting, like, there was many moments where all these folks were sprinting, and I'm like, let them on the truck, because it was just, like, it just went fast, really fast.
Yeah.
Um, and I don't know how you're gonna be able to encourage people to not all stack up at Margaret and Seventh, because that was like, there was barely, like, it was really sparse and spread out, and then there was just like, a ton of people!
Yeah.
And the ton of people kinda carried towards the end, but by that time, like, from a crowd engagement standpoint, we were like almost out of the.
Oh, we were out of candy.
Treats and treats to engage the crowd.
Don't sit at the end of the parade.
No, yeah, unless the planning commission comes with us again, because that guy had some candy left for the very end of the parade.
Oh, really?
Because he's a planner.
Because he's on the plan. That was my big joke.
I don't, more candy, or we can have more slightly, I was just drawing handfuls everywhere.
Yeah, you were going crazy.
Or maybe there's like a pit stop where we just refill ya.
Yeah.
Yeah. replenishment.
Well, I thought, you know.
We ran out too.
I kept having this urge to just throw handfuls of candy, but then I thought Carrie Erprenbach would jump out of a, from behind a bush and tackle me.
Yeah.
Kick me out of the parade, because I thought you can't throw candy.
Amanda. I threw it at myself and handed it. I threw it towards others.
I was like, yeah, I'm very concerned there's liability.
Yes.
If, so candy doesn't go far enough, then you have little coming.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. That would be the concern. Working on it every year.
I appreciated that we did it with the planning commission.
That was bad.
I love that.
Because it was an opportunity to kinda co-mingle with other people who care enough to volunteer for the city.
Yeah.
On the, in, like, an organized way, I thought that was really neat, which also, like, makes me sad that we still haven't been able to organize the city tour with everyone, and I was thinking about that on the walk up, which is a side tangent, but that can reinforce, like, the parade experience maybe can be used to reinforce. Really.
Yeah.
Thanks for getting this prepped, it was all well organized, you and Joe had it all set up on the truck very nicely. Um, maybe, like, there was a little bit of challenge getting up and out of, in and out of the truck, but.
Oh, it was hilarious, I was.
We just didn't know how to do like a step thing, or if there was a step thing, you made it work.
Appreciative that nobody filmed me.
Yeah.
Because, I mean, I actually, I'm sorry no one filmed me, because we would've gone viral, it was hilarious, it was, it was quite, I was laughing at myself really hard inside, although I may have looked mortified and embarrassed, I was like, this is too funny, like, I cannot.
Good, that's all great feedback, I'll take that back to people that need to hear that.
Next year bubble machine.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
Ooh, I like that.
Okay.
Hey, could've thought that, we can walk around with those bubble things.
You can make them as a part of the craft thing.
Look at the paper tubes, or no?
I asked your brother, and he was like, just YouTube, um, sent me a YouTube.
So if we made like a sculpture that like fits bubbles or something?
It like dips into, you can like help.
Oh.
A little bit, and then, like, it picks up like, uh.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Perfect.
Like, you should be on a Friday.
Oh, you want another Friday next year?
Every year, it's always on a Thursday.
Yeah, why is that?
Friday's the car show.
Yeah.
So.
Oh.
Is this what, though? Maybe Wednesday?
Everything more angry.
Thursdays are just like always so, so, so busy, everything's on Thursday.
Okay, we'll reorganize your schedule, see you.
Well, it's good to know, too, if people are super busy with high school stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, a lot of like volleyball games.
All right.
Okay, Autumn Arts Festival recap.
I cannot say enough good things about the Autumn Arts Festival, I was not involved except to be there as a helper observer person, and let me tell you, it was so, it was a well-oiled machine the whole day, it was just, it was a true delight, I stayed way longer than I intended because I was having fun, and I was not expecting that.
There were a lot of volunteers, I appreciated that.
Oh, my God, they, they were so cute, it was a sister duo, and they were just hilarious, they were just, they were trying not to break all the art as we were bringing it in, it was fantastic, very calm, all around.
A lot of the artists that I spoke to, because I went by a couple times throughout the day to make sure I talked to everyone, and most of them said it was so helpful to have volunteers there to help them load out and, load in and load out, awesome, they were very appreciative.
Good.
Yeah, I helped a few people load up.
Yeah, sorry.
What is that?
I don't know.
No. I was just walking to the middle of a meeting like that, what's wrong with this?
Cities.
Huh?
Top secret, it's in the email.
And it's public record, yeah.
What do you have, Tom?
Uh, one, just one thing, uh, so a couple things, uh, I, I think, yeah, so I think there were good, uh, volunteers for helping the makers get set up, and then there were, it, there were a few makers that were there for a long time at the end, I stayed until the end to help people get out, and there was, there was, well, there was one person who just didn't want any help, you know, there were several of us that were begging to help her, and she was just like, no.
I think she filled out a survey and commented that.
She felt pressured.
Yes, she was.
Kind of uncomfortable.
I understand where she's coming from, basically, if I'm tearing down from a show, everything needs to go in boxes in a certain order, it needs to go in my car in a certain order, and I've just got it down doing it myself, because I know I do it myself several shows, so, yeah, so having help while it's nice for some people, it messes more so with their routine.
Well, I, I asked her at one point, she's like, well, maybe, maybe once I have everything down, because she has a particular way of doing it, I'm like, okay, yeah, great, and then came by later and she was the last person, and there was a couple, and I think they were other people who had a booth set up.
Okay.
And they were really, sure, it's getting dark, I mean, come on, we're right here, we can help, and they were really kinda pressing it, like, no, and so I was like, all right, well, I'm not gonna do this, so.
No.
But so the people, I think, that was, that were probably pressing the most were actually other artists.
Okay.
Um, there's one thing I would say for the, uh, performers, so I thought that, I thought it went, uh, really well, I do think, I, I wonder, like, I, I borrowed this sound system from my brother, which was lucky that he had it, and it worked well, um, but I just wonder if that's not something that we or the city should invest in at some point, for this and any other event, I know the fire department has something, but they could, uh, you know, I don't know if there's something that we invest in more, I mean, this thing that my brother has worked really great, and I think it was thirteen hundred dollars, um, and I'm sure you could get something, might be something good for the city to have for, for, uh, any kind of event, and especially because you gotta be so flexible when you have, uh, different performers coming in, and they have to have different ways to hook up whatever they have for their music. Um, but fortunately, everything worked out really well there, um, the other thing is, from another one of my brothers, I borrowed twenty chairs to bring down to have set up there, and we really needed those, and we needed more, and so then finally, when everything was done inside the building, then we brought a bunch of the chairs from the building out, and I think if we continue to have performers, whether it's for this or for any other event, even if it's music in the parks, I think we're usually safe to bring lawn chairs, right? But, you know, just to have some more chairs available that we can set up there would be nice.
Not music in the park, they had chairs, that they.
I thought it was.
I think they'd be way of.
Bring your own.
Really, okay.
Yeah.
But.
Like benches and picnic tables in the vicinity.
Right.
But I think what really helped is, you know, it very much helped to just have chairs set up there so people knew that that was a performing space, you know, that things were gonna happen there.
I was a little sad when Taylor, the birdhouses were over and Taylor was kind of off in that corner by himself.
Yeah.
I almost was gonna suggest that he move, but that's really more, more finagling than.
I did suggest that to him earlier, he said it was just gonna be.
Yeah, I mean, any sense for the paint that he was doing?
I think that if we, if we could do that all over again, we could've probably done without the sidewalk chalk outside the building and had Taylor set up over there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good idea.
But there were also some of the, some of the dancers really spread out on that side of the building, and use that space.
And then the sidewalk chalk was no longer usable, like.
Right.
Yeah.
It was now green room.
Yeah.
But I really liked where it was set up, I know there's probably more space on the other side, but I think having that path, weaving through the vendors, um, I really liked that, I thought that was lovely, and they had good tree cover, and it wasn't too hot.
Let me add a couple birdhouses stolen.
Yeah. So as far as, um, that, like, where the vendors are set up, one thing I heard several times now is the accessibility factor of the vendors, and it's tough, because.
I'm sorry, as in, like, they couldn't get?
No, as in, uh, for those in wheelchairs or.
Even with the paths?
Even, well, the path not as much, but for the vendors that we had in the grass.
Oh, okay, got it, got it.
Yep, so, I don't know how you deal with that, because the vendors aren't even the only part of the event, so.
Yeah.
Something is gonna be on grass.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if we just do the best we can with what we have, and.
It's good feedback, but I think that's what it almost has to be, is the best we can with what we have.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and, and you know, there may be like difference in vision next year, a little.
Yeah.
That can be. That's, that's for two, but.
Yeah, one thing, I was really pleased with, we talked about that at the event, is that having it all out front there like that, I thought, well, is this gonna be too small of a space, and it was not at all, it was just really good, and all of the action was kind of in spite of everything, and so I thought that, uh.
And we heard feedback from most of the food trucks, too, that they loved being on the street there, I think they got a lot more business with that, too.
Really?
They were perfect there, perfectly have them up on the street. Um, a lot of artists that, from the, we sent out a survey to the artists afterwards, and they could choose whether their sales were as expected, lower than expected, um, most of them chose better than expected.
Oh.
So that's fantastic, um, and then the ways they heard about the event was through the North St. Paul email, Facebook page, um, I reached out to several of them that ended up showing up, and their friends who were vendors that signed up. I have thought for next year, but I can bring that to the next meeting, it'll be fabulous. Kind of really digest it.
Yeah, I have a lot of thoughts. Okay, is that like better in an email to Sarah before the next meeting, to just provide?
I'm wondering.
Carrie? Which I've.
It's more of like a group discussion, thoughts kind of thing, on what we want the event to be in the future.
Hmm.
Um.
How do you mean, like, do we want it?
I guess I'll mention a little bit more now, um, so, in my experience, my five years of doing this as my job, right, I've been to a lot of different events, and there's shows that happen, um, that are more craft shows, and there are shows that are more art shows, and that's not necessarily say it's the quality of the work, but normally the type of the work, and then there's overlap, too, for sure, um, I think this year we had overlap where it was kind of a little bit of everything.
Mm-hmm.
But one thing I wonder is going forward, if we want to try and do, because ninety percent of our applicants were claiming themselves as emerging artists.
Hmm.
Maybe we become what I've never seen is, it's only emerging artist show.
Oh, that'd be cool.
And just, and.
Innovative, new.
I'd even offer to do, like, I'll do one little workshop before the event, if they have questions about how to do this type of thing.
That's cool.
We could set up, uh, inside, I was thinking maybe, oh, inside again is different, but, um, if we do a junior art show, too, so anyone in high school or.
Low years.
Yeah.
That's awesome, I love it.
I got goosebumps when you said that.
And I was thinking inside, because then the youths don't need to, um, purchase the tents and everything, so inside would work well for them, and.
I like that idea, I don't, I don't know, I, but if you make it exclusively emerging artists, then you lose some people who are, who have been doing well and are no longer emerging.
Yes, but, yeah, it's something, that's why I say what we want the show to be, if we want it to be emerging artists, then they'll have the opportunity to exhibit with us for a couple of years, and then hopefully they'll spread the word about it,
Mm-hmm.
And then we get a new collection of makers each year, isn't that either?
Yeah, or maybe just have a couple of seasoned people to bring in their.
Yeah, another thought I had was if we ever would want, make an arrangement with maybe a couple of seasoned people who'd be willing to do the show, but they adopt an emerging artist. Yeah.
That'd be, yeah, cool.
Do you like the idea of using the inside of the building for something, because I, I think there was a lot of people that played bingo, but I just felt like bingo was, didn't fit with the whole event.
Oh, I had fun playing bingo, I did.
You go to the VSW or something, know if they do it?
I can, I can, but it really is a family-friendly thing to do, you know?
Yeah.
I know, but it's been so kinda.
I know.
Something for someone.
Which is in like art supplies.
There you go.
Yeah.
All of it, yeah.
Another thing to bring more parks into it, have you seen any of those, um, I don't even know what they call them, but if you take like a children's book and you put a page on each sign, yard sign, and you follow a path and you read the whole book.
Yeah.
So we have a great opportunity for that, in case you like to.
And I live at Ramsey County, like. Don't already have company.
Anyway, like I said, I have thought for it.
We can be like, we can have the theme be emerging artists, but that doesn't mean all artists have to be, right? Like, I would encourage not to like back too far into the corner in case there is a hard time identifying artists, and then inviting those veterans in.
Yeah.
Isn't going against the mission of what the event is, but advertising it.
Right, yeah.
Emerg, like, featuring these emerging artists, because you're right, it's not done.
No.
Yeah.
And these art festivals are popping up all over the place.
And I love the mentorship aspect.
Yeah.
That really is a great way to pay.
We need to find the right artists who are willing to dedicate the time to that, and their expertise to it.
Yeah, and then would you give like an age range, like, I know at work we have like early-stage investigators, like ten years post your final degree.
Yeah, um, this year we did, uh, allow for some emerging artists to get a discount on their booth, and we put the years at three years.
Okay.
In business, um, I still need to figure out how other art fairs qualify that, what do they ask for to make sure that it's not just someone trying to get a discounted booth.
Yeah, it doesn't matter what you do.
Right.
Oh, that's great, I love it.
Love the idea, it's like, it just kinda brings in more energy, and goes, yeah, great, great job.
Coloring sheets were great.
Yes, they look so good, um, these are great for them, those are.
I did, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we've gotten a lot of amazing comments on that, and I printed more actually, so when kids are coming in, they're asking, how do I get one, so I've been handing them out.
Nice.
They're loving that, yeah.
That's great.
Yeah, it's been wonderful, great feedback on that, and a lot of City Hall employees have been asking, what's next? Are you guys gonna keep featuring stuff in City Hall, we love it, it's a bright spot.
Oh, good.
First of all.
That's where we stopped so far.
Your part, fine. Could you have, uh, well, we could bring the ice fishing contest back, and then have the art cart out on the ice.
Sounds interesting.
Yeah.
That's like, it's like a daycare.
Yeah.
Okay, um, so updates from subcommittees, Project Snowy, any update on this one, Stacy?
Uh, we have the application for artists out and available right now, um, out on the website.
Okay.
We've reached, sent that out to our list of artisans in our database, and just waiting for submissions.
I think we had, do we have another vendor commit?
Just Jiskie so far.
Jiskie, it's only been.
As far as commit, commit.
And then we have Premier Bank who committed, who has already paid for it, they have to.
What about the?
I need to touch base with the history. Okay.
I just wanted.
Okay, yeah. We're getting there.
Um, okay, uh, murals.
Um.
Did you start meeting again?
We did.
The board was up, sure, I don't.
We should meet once a month or something, just to start thinking about what we could do next, guess what I see, when the, when the, uh.
No money, but.
Budget is, I don't know, kind of money we have for next year.
Mm-hmm, actually, comments with murals and leads into snowy, I got a new tattoo, and I was talking to my tattoo artist at Gabriel's Fallen Angels in downtown, and she said that they discussed snowy, and within their little team were trying to discuss whether they go with a snowman, or if they paint a mural on the side of their building, I said, well, you could do both, and we could help you with that.
Oh.
So, they might be a good place to reach out to.
Wouldn't they also be, come up with a great design for snowy?
Yeah, and that's what I told her, I was like, if you purchase a snowy, so you can choose one of your artists to decorate snowy, then you get the money for the artisan as well, with your discount, so we'll see.
Oh, good, thank you.
That reminds me of Project Snowy, sorry, we're gonna backtrack a little bit, the cost did go up, so I think that's something we need to talk about, um, it went up several hundred dollars from the last time it was sold, it was additional two hundred and fifty dollars for the statue.
Okay.
Um, which means with everything, including the artist's stipend, the cost is looking at fifty-two hundred, so we are over what we're asking, which obviously now we can't go back to these businesses, and so we need more money, so.
We had some budget, right?
Yes, we had a little bit of budget, so we're gonna have to work with that.
Okay.
And the hope on the subcommittee then was that, would be that we cover that cost to the city.
Um, back to the mural discussion, but to your point about what the tattoos and, um, you know, I know I've brought this up a couple of times before in the past here, but I think there's, uh, some appetite from this commission to support private businesses with the cost of a mural, um, but I think, like, do we, what's our limit there, do you think, or how, how far would we go on that? Um, and I'd ask council member one what you think about that, like, what, is there a point where the council would be uncomfortable and, like, much, how, how big of a piece of the pie we would contribute to that for private?
Um, I think it's in how you, um, expose it, and how you reach out to maybe all the businesses, too, right, that it's not. I think towards like, but, that it is something, opportunity is open for.
So that's where I think, so Carrie, you know, the, we could, we could maybe discuss having like a, offering a mural program as part of a downtown beautification project or something, I mean, I think like when the, because the city had, there's precedent for this, the city had done, I know like the awnings and things like that, downtown beautification, it was, it was focused on downtown, right? Um, and, and so the city helped fund some of those things, I don't think they paid for all of them, like, the full cost of.
Yeah, I think it was some sort of program through the E. D. A., either.
Um.
Would you also offer that to businesses for interior murals, since not everyone has an exterior?
I think so. No.
Do you first say that?
I mean, it, you know, in interiors, I mean, it's just that much less available for the.
But in public space, I guess depending on the type of business.
In a public, in a public space, then there's no, then the, all bets are off, I mean, we could fund that a hundred percent if it's in a.
No, no, sorry, I mean, like, inside of a shop.
Yeah, I know, but even if it's inside, I mean, it's, I mean, I think the idea is that anyone walking down the street, they, they wouldn't have to walk in, you need to be driving by and see it, I think that's also.
Probably a, a good question for city manager.
And we have, I just started that conversation with, um, Brandy this week as well, um, saying that there is some interest, and I know we've worked with, talked with Love from the past, and she got very excited, she did suggest Gabriel, she said that would be a great spot to have something, um, she proposed that if we could find a way to do the wall that's at Rotary Park.
Yeah.
Work with Burwells over there, that that could be ideal, huge canvas.
I think.
That could be great.
Isn't the challenge with that, that it's owned by, it's not us?
Yes, but that could be where we might partner with that business, and do some sort of cost sharing, something like that.
Okay, got it.
Um, but I can continue to work with her.
Part of the gateway trail. Tell me, no, that must be, oh, that's the tunnel thing, okay.
So, yes, I'll continue to work with Brandy and the city manager.
Um, okay, utility boxes?
Oh, I love these, what I can update for the subcommittee is that we have sent images to Sarah, and we met as a group at the utility box site up Seventh, and kinda talked about different options, and then hunted the images off to Sarah, and I believe the rest is an update for Sarah to provide.
Yeah, so the final proof came back, I wasn't able to add them to the, um, agenda here, but I did add the images, so, um, what I'm looking for today is a boat, they are ready to go, start on Monday, if we agree that we like the images.
I love the images.
Um, I tried to make it easy to kind of understand what size of the box they're gonna go on, and then the final cost. Um, I tried to make it easy to kind of understand what size of the box they're gonna go on, and then the final cost.
So, these are all on the side, and then this one's on the top for the one box. The short green one, and then. This, the deer.
I don't think there's anything gonna go on the top of that one because it's such a small.
It's tall, yeah.
And it's tall.
Gotcha.
Yes.
Yeah, these were great.
Yeah.
Emily, um, her, one of her friends, who's a photographer, actually provided these photos. Can we credit them? Yeah, there will be, there will be.
Oh, good. That'll be nice.
Figure out in what way, but yeah. Those are really lovely.
That's funny.
So, yeah, we just need a vote today to approve the spending of that.
I move to approve.
Second to.
On favor?
Aye.
Close, most of Carrie.
Wonderful. Yay. One point five.
Yeah.
Do you know what the timeline would be from now on?
They want to start on Monday.
Great.
Oh.
It'll be pretty quick here.
Excellent. What if someone thought this was good?
Absolutely.
All of a sudden, it's, uh, fall.
Yeah. You know the one. No, sorry.
Okay. Um, art cart. Amanda, do you have anything on that one? It's wrapped up for the year.
Wrapped up for the year.
Oh, good. Hey.
Really good year for the art cart. Did the art cart make it on the news? I never saw any of the interviews from the.
I never did either.
Uh, not the interviews, but, um, they did, I think on Channel Five, they showed us, so briefly, but not your interviews.
Aw, Tom.
Oh, they, I thought my sister's listening.
You?
Yeah.
We could. We couldn't find it anywhere.
And then my, uh.
Pretty needs to get back on the.
Yeah, I know. My, and then my brother-in-law sent me like five pictures, like screenshots from the interview.
With you?
On Channel Nine, yeah.
Channel Nine.
Well, we're gonna keep looking, so they, you know.
Did anyone see the video C.C. took?
Yeah.
Didn't.
Well, video.
Of.
Of you.
Belly dancers.
Did you like that? More where that came from?
No, please. Yeah.
Somebody got a good picture of it. Hey, well, that was part of the thing. They wanted you to.
They, they were encouraging audience participation. That's right.
I think in that way, so. More context is, yeah. Thank you.
Um, okay. So, uh, Paint and Sip, we have another one coming up. I saw that in the newsletter today.
Yeah, that looks like pumpkins.
Mm-hmm, yes. Beautiful pumpkins. Um, no registrations yet, but again, it just went out today, so. Um, and then I think Lisa sent out an email asking for help that day because you're not available. So, if anybody is, that would be.
The date?
The nineteenth, Thursday the nineteenth.
Isn't it ending?
Yeah, yeah.
Hmm.
Yeah, correct.
Where are you going?
Just towards Chatham College and I.
We're going to N D S U.
Oh, really? I was thinking about.
Iowa might be warmer.
Want, wanna look at it?
Oh, maybe.
Maybe. We're, we're going to their fight.
Well, because they're playing you then.
Oh, fun. That'll be a great time.
Well, yeah, so if anybody's available, I'm out of town that day, but if there's anybody available or if you know of anyone else who would be willing to volunteer for that, please reach out to Sarah or Lisa.
And pray for me because I will be chaperoning the dance field trip to Toronto.
Wow.
Have fun with that.
Canada.
Yeah, Canada.
Oh.
That'll be fun, right?
So, what are they doing?
Heading off to Canada.
Playing music.
Playing some music, having a masterclass with some dude.
Oh, that's cool.
It'll be fun.
Somebody, somebody asked me if I was gonna chaperon the choir trip.
Where are they going?
To Washington, D.C. And I said, "I don't like going on vacation with my own kid." Be the other.
All of them.
I know.
I don't know. All right, I guess we'll find out.
I won't tell.
Find the cool.
It's a small group. Okay.
Oh, my God. Um, funny story, uh, I'll share later, but should, when I was a senior in high school, we went to Europe.
Oh.
With the choir.
Oh, my sister did that too.
I can't believe that they had the nerve to do that, because what a, but that choir director, Carl Liptke, former choir director at France High School, uh, he was a disciplinarian. He just did not mess around. Um, so Autumn Art Festival is done, so that's it.
Great work.
All of our updates. So, hey, you know, yeah, I mean, we've, and now with the, with the utility boxes, the second round of that happening this year, Project Snowy's moving ahead. We got a mural done. The art cart had a good year. Paint and Sip has been going well. The arts.
And let's remember, this is only two and a half years deep.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, and it was, and this was just, you know, this was a really big year, you know?
Really, only two years deep. We started August of twenty-one.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm.
Well.
Does it really count that it's been three years on our time?
It has to with the calendar.
I hate everything.
Well, we love you, Carrie.
All right, well.
Okay.
Got the OGs here.
OG?
That's right. You can use that too.
Well, which was gonna be my thing as I sent you all an email, but.
Yeah.
I'll have to let you know.
So. Oh, we have, I'm sorry, we have, uh, excellence, uh, culture and H C C projects. Is there an update?
Nope.
No update, okay. Old business? Got any old business?
Nope.
No? Reports from staff, that's you, Sarah.
That is me. Well, the one we discovered was a term.
Yeah.
Yeah, we wanna hopefully get ahead of it this year and have the council approve it in December, not January, like we did last year. So, we will need decisions soon later, but.
I would really like.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead. You go ahead.
I don't even know where I was going.
I'm still working on it.
Carrie, what would you really like?
Yeah. I want more students. I wanna continue that. I think that was really helpful. I don't know if you found it helpful, but I think having, um, a variety of voices is really good.
Do you think it'd be easier if there was more than just you sitting? I mean, you, we're cool, right? We're pretty chill, but.
Yeah, especially after being at my first meeting, like having, like have another person from Tartan, and it's really nice. What do you think about this?
Should we say something? Should we ask this? Should we not?
Yeah.
To, yeah.
Yeah.
You taught Tom what?
That guy's swearing, you know? Don't talk about me like I'm not here.
Well, and I will say too, like, I really appreciate this updated, um, approach to our meetings because it took me a long time, and you had to start too, sitting up there. And that was like, that is not the vibe of this group. The group is really, it's more collaborative when we're in a circle and when we're all.
Yeah.
Together and not just sitting at a podium staring to an empty room. If we needed to, I mean, if the public showed up, it'd be great. But here we are.
For being courageous.
Yes.
Of all the people to see our first, here's a top, top notch.
Oh, I wanted to ask you, uh, so your dance group was really great.
Oh, thank you.
And was, but I was so worried with rolling around on that concrete. Did anybody like rip holes in your stuff?
I have like a scrape on my foot still.
Really?
Oh, no.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't be surprised at all.
Yeah, no, it was, we perform at like market tents, which is on even like up at the workforce, so.
Oh, okay.
Pretty nice.
You know, it's.
All things considered.
Another thing that, uh, uh, I just, um, grassed about this, but all those different groups brought in a, a lot of different people.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To the party, you know, so it's kinda neat.
You could tell when it was inspiration, because it was, it was just like.
Yeah.
With all these parents with the camp.
All of a sudden, the whole crowd changed. I'm like, where'd all these people?
Well, it's like our first time performing any of these dances, like, you know, the parents have really seen the master.
That's so cool.
Like, schools of my dances aren't even done yet.
Yeah, but you would never know that. You guys were so professional. Really lovely.
Very good.
Anyway, that is to say, could we please put out the call for.
Absolutely.
Right, I believe it's one year.
I was like, if there's something, uh, I think.
Yeah.
Like a flyer or, even if.
Do you have any friends who you're like, you should do that?
Baby. I'm like, all my friends are like always really busy, so. I definitely like ask them.
Yeah.
Or maybe your link crew, sorry.
No, we still have that flyer from last year. I'm not sure if you created that or who created that, but it was beautiful, so I can.
I know, I know, I, we have, we're like sending out emails constantly about it. If they're like in class and their teacher like.
Is there a way to make the application easily, is it, is there a QR code to the app on the flyer for kids?
I can double check, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Just to make it easy?
Yeah.
So, if the teacher holds it up and they're like, click this now if you wanna participate, because.
Yeah.
Like, I think I personally sent it to you, right?
Yeah.
And you, that's.
And I feel like that's kind of the thing is like, I joined it because I knew someone on it. So, a lot of these people might not want. I mean, if you could like get it out before December, like they could come to a meeting before they apply, and like, I'm here, I don't know.
Oh, that's amazing.
I mean, it might not be someone I know, but at least I know that they're like interested.
Yeah, they know who does.
I suppose I'm like a meeting.
Yeah.
And how, there's like, currently, there's two additional North High parents too. Like, I'm.
Right.
A parent of a student. Tom's a parent of a student.
Oh.
Can I be?
Yeah. Awesome, I don't know.
Come on, now.
I have a group ever.
But, but you know, you, we know, we know who we're talking about. We love him, but, but for people at school that know him, you can be like.
But, yeah, exactly.
You can use that for networking. Or Jack.
Yeah, not like.
Or Benicio.
Maybe Benicio's the join. Here's his favorite slide.
That's hilarious.
I'm gonna watch this video.
Yeah.
Benicio, join.
I hear that.
But, I mean, because people, it is intimidating, right? And you had, it was really great that you had a connection. And there's, we're, we're not too mean. Like, okay.
Just the right amount of things.
To get things done.
That's right.
Um, the only other thing I had is Emily sent me a statement that she would like me to read to everybody. Apologies in advance, reading out loud is not easy for me. Someone will try to do this.
You want me to do it? You don't have to.
Would you?
I would, but I don't wanna rob you of the opportunity to do it. But if you don't like reading out loud, I don't like it.
At that, so.
Hey, you, you. I wish I was joining you tonight. Unfortunately, this afternoon, it became apparent I'd contracted the dreaded hand, foot, and mouth virus from my friend. I had that. That is horrible. I didn't see it's going around right now. Oh, my God, it, it was so bad, and we didn't know what it was.
It's just the worst name.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it really is.
It is.
Yeah. It's not, it's not serious, but it is super contagious. I didn't want to leave you all with that as a parting gift, exclamation point. I just wanted to officially share that as of today, I'm stepping down from my seat on the commission. Thank you all for your support during my time with the team, especially city council member Wong and Tom Sonic for bringing me aboard. It's been such a wonderful gateway for me to get to know this colorful town. I'll be cheering for you all from the sidelines and hopefully attending some events in the future. If you have questions and wanna keep in contact, please don't hesitate to reach out. Warmest wishes, Emily Peg Wynn. Oh, I said that. Thanks for reading that.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Uh, but that's all I have.
Okay. Well, we'll miss Emily. She isn't leaving us too, is she?
No.
Um, all right, reports from commissioners. Carrie, do you want?
I think I've talked enough today.
Agreed.
Well, on that note, yeah.
Stacy?
I am golden.
Golden. Amanda?
Nothing to report.
Uh, our student commissioner Stacy, do you have anything?
No.
I got nothing else to do either. Uh, reports from council liaison Wong.
Sure, yeah, I think you all received the newsletter now.
Yeah.
Okay.
And I read it.
I don't wanna repeat, like, everything, because it, it's, there's a lot happening.
Yeah.
It was big today.
Yeah.
Proved it.
All of it. Thank you, Sarah. Um, one thing I did, um, wanna, um, call out that's this weekend is, um, the Hang Time Board Shop.
Oh, yeah.
Skate night, um.
That's very cool.
It's, um, basically highlighting, um, suicide prevention and those that have, um, had people in there who have experienced, um, suicide or suicide, I mean. So, it's just bringing awareness, but, um, we're all, they're, uh, gonna meet at eleven o'clock right outside of Hang Time Board Shop, and then there's gonna be.
On Saturday?
Sunday morning at eleven.
Oh, good morning at eleven.
Skip church and go, go skate.
After.
Or Saturday night.
So, I will be there on my skate for.
Oh, really? Photo off.
Wow, they're really cool.
She used to skate.
Oh, my.
You two, there's no you two. She is.
Can you see like tricks on a skate?
She do an olive.
Wow.
That was my favorite part of the parade, was watching the hang time, because they just, they like left the entire street open and then just went woo wee all the way down. It was so fun.
My son has been taking the skateboard lessons through them for a month or so, and he's doing really great, yeah.
I went down there and saw the, the finger thing. And I just saw that they were gonna be like, me, 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 and I'm like, how come it's that? And I watched, and like.
Lisa, the, the parking lot needs to be a skate park.
Yeah, agreed.
Not a parking lot.
Yep.
Across the street.
Oh, here?
Oh, the car garage.
The car garage needs to be a skate park. Mm-hmm. Because we have, we have a need.
And then at the ribbon cutting, it's Lisa.
Yes.
Scathing it.
With the scissors.
That's dangerous.
You're gonna have to run for council again because of.
Sorry, Lisa.
Well, please share your opinions with. Um, again, there's one email address that goes to all of us and, and.
There is?
There is, really?
Mm-hmm.
What is that?
Um.
I can look it up while you keep talking.
I will be here, thank you. I will be here to share my thoughts.
So, yeah, wanted, wanted to highlight that and then, um, just briefly, um, talk about the tobacco, um, ordinance.
Oh, yeah, tell me more about that.
Being revisited, um, right now. So, we have somebody, um, from an organization. Other, um, group, and they work with the Public Health Law Centers and are investigating. They've, uh, told us we need to update our ordinance to mirror state and federal statutes. So, now it's from eighteen to twenty-one years old. Um, and some of the, um, items of consideration for this new ordinance is, uh, distance from, uh, a youth-centered, um, state, so a school or a community center, something similar to that. Question of how many licenses the city will issue, uh, with different, um, approaches from different cities and it ranges. If you can do it, we've discussed. The, what landed, I think, was seven, um, licenses, um, they won't put any businesses out, uh.
Was there anything about flavors too, restricting flavors?
Yep, exactly. And so, flavors is another component for consideration. Um, there's still a little bit more discussion, I think, needed to have around that. Um, but yeah, so just laying out, do you wanna get rid of flavors? What does all of flavors even mean? Mint, you know, there's, there's a lot of.
Is there a particular reason why they came to talk to us or, like, was there, uh, catalyzing factors to bring them here? Or they just noticed that our ordinance didn't match what the state had and they were like, oh, hey?
Yeah, so, um, uh, well, a lot of conversation around the cannabis law comes up and so in our discussion around that, I brought up tobacco and, and maybe the, the, just in here, just kind of looking at that, that also we needed, that we legally needed. Otherwise, our city could. Age of eighteen. So, um, but yeah, that was another catalyst.
Need not buy cigarettes till eighteen anymore?
Twenty-one. Just stay in Minnesota.
Federal, I don't know. But there's some of the three components that are being discussed.
Next you're gonna tell me they're more than a buck fifty a pack.
Oh, wow.
Back in my day.
Have you bought gas recently?
The city ever considered putting electronic or electric vehicle charging stations in any of their public parks?
Oh, absolutely, uh, um, we're having this. Now, within our capital limit.
Isn't there a program through the state to be able to get some downtown or something?
Yeah, there were some grants out and I know. To. Community center, that was also a topic. These one proposed.
You seem very interested in electric.
Yep.
Any reason? I have an electric vehicle, that's why.
Did you?
Yeah.
It's very much. What, what did you get?
I had a pre-owned twenty seventeen Chevy Bolt. And it is, it's a slow charger, but I, it fits, needs as my family wears. That's great. Two hundred and forty miles. Did I see that Cokerel moved out?
Is it?
Yeah, um, their lease is. Either I'd have to double, their leases happened or it's coming up.
Okay, and do we know when the Asian restaurant is officially gonna have indoor seating? Okay.
Which restaurant?
Yeah, the new one where K and J.
Yep.
Oh, yeah, because they have stuff out for the parade. There's a new restaurant.
You can get takeout, but you can't sit.
Oh, really? Yep. What's the name of the restaurant?
Called The Den.
They're a little ways away from my other side of my job, but the permitting, um, they're a little ways away from opening the.
Okay.
Seating side, so. Yeah.
What happened to that citizen commission on like, community center building? Is there, whatever came on that with?
Citizen commission?
Soliciting session.
Community engagement.
Community engagement and all that stuff that, uh, um, former city manager was leading there.
Yeah, um, so we are still planning on having differences around that and to, um, get a grasp of what the parameters are around, um, things, um, that. Paid it or, so, yeah, we're just.
Any questions for Lisa? Any additional questions?
I did find the email address if you want it. Um, so it is mayor dash city council.
Oh, my God, really?
Mm-hmm. At North St. Paul.
And you gotta do it, because I always do it wrong. You write out North and then it's S T and then Paul?
Yes. Mayor dash city council.
Great, I'll fire off a couple of angry emails tonight.
And that also goes to the.
We're worth doing it. But yeah, and then, uh, one other thing that I'll add too is that we're in the process of our budget still, um, and, uh, right now, we'll be looking at our, um, capital improvement plan, which is posted on our meeting notes. Um, it's about two hundred pages long and it goes into some details over the next ten years of what each department anticipates their spending will be and on what items and. In your spare time, we're having talks about city government, what we're spending. That's a re, really great document to look at. It's gonna really help us plan for the future, so. Um, in the chart. Take a look, um, you know, we will have a special meeting, I believe, for this particular, um, topic and we will be certifying or we will be, um, finalizing.
Is there like a kudos line on the one? Like, good job.
There should be.
You could send kudos to mayor dash city council at North St. Paul.
But the city staff be there? Um, if you request, city manager should.
I'm pleased to share a thing. That she gets good feedback.
Because the high school or the school district has a really nice kudo. Oh, yeah, you can write about bullying, you can write about feedback, you can say, great job, I noticed that that target card has finally gone from the tower in parking lot. Why are you looking at me like I'm?
This, what target?
You know, it's a target card, but someone always. A target card, I'm like.
I know.
Like, I sent a kudos email today, but I just sent it via email directly to like the person. You know, that's how I used to do it and then I did a couple of them and they were like, oh, my God, we touched on that all day and I was like. Really? Okay. So, yeah. Started doing it. Fun. You should have it for the city.
You could get everybody reading the newsletter if you did, like, it's something like, like.
Yeah.
In painted.
Ooh.
Yeah, I love that.
I used to love that idea. Okay, and then, uh, those kids from the, uh, state.
Yes, did you see that in the newsletter?
Oh, that's it? Were doing certificates or something?
Well, there's a lot of them. It's a issue and then we have to get permission from all their families because they're under eighteen, so we thought the best way to do it would be feature them in the newsletter.
Yeah, that was weird because I saw that thing and it's like, the Arts Commission honored these, I'm like, we did?
Oh, Carrie.
I just suggested it.
Yeah.
I did it in their writing line.
What did they do?
Well.
They all got placed at the.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I saw that. Yes, yes, there was, there's so many variables with that. So we did the best we could.
I mean.
But thank you for sending that. It was great actually looking at their artwork too.
Right?
Really neat, yeah. Really neat.
If them kids wanna get a certificate from us, they're gonna have to get some rocks and make a snake. As Bill does.
Could those people be like on this commission?
That's a great idea. We should reach out to them.
Yeah.
Good job. I don't either.
One of them.
I'll look in the newsletter.
Okay.
My son. He wants two ribbons, that's his favorite.
Very pottery, right?
My son, Jeff.
Pottery.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, he's really into ceramics. And then there was this, there was one of the artists that was selling at the.
Nicole Valerie.
Is that what her name was?
She was the ceramicist.
Huh?
She was the ceramic artist, yeah.
Yeah.
Just call it like a student.
Right, yeah. Talked to her for a while. I bought a mug from her. And I, when I picked it up, so you have to know this, you have to be, you have to watch the great pottery thrown on, but I picked it up and I went. It's really.
Did she get this? Did she get it?
I didn't.
He's telling himself she got it.
Yeah.
But, you know, if you know that show, because the guy cried.
There's one guy that cries every time, yeah.
Sometimes four times in a show.
He's one of, he's one of the.
You gotta watch.
One of the hosts and the judges.
I hope he retires from it.
The great pottery throwdown on H B O.
It's pretty cute.
But season four, both my son and I fell in love with Jody from Wales. And her accent was so heavy, most of the time we couldn't understand a word that she was saying, but we were both.
Subtitle fun?
Madly in love with her and we wanna go to England to propose. I think I have a better chance. Kinda right in between myself and my son in age, so.
Your wife might have something to say though.
Yeah.
Your son could surprise you too.
Maybe.
Maybe we are wrapping up.
We're wrapping. Anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I make the motion to adjourn.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at seven thirty-four, it's record.
Thanks.